Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you all for coming out this evening. I am Dr. Anita Wright Superintendent here at Lincoln. And at this time, I would like to recognize any board members that are present. See, Mrs. Gardner is here. I would like to recognize any elected officials that are here. I see Alderman Gardner and Clerk Dr. Figg. Once again, thank you for coming out. I would also like to recognize my administrators and our cabinet members. Ms. Houston, our Building and Grounds Director. Mrs. Barnes, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Assessment. Ms. Munoz, Director of Preschool and Multilingual Services. Mrs. Monica Reynolds, Assistant Principal. Mr. Daniel Lawrence, Assistant Principal. And Mrs. Baker sitting on our panel. I also need to give a special thanks to Dr. Young, our Student Services Director. She has worked tirelessly to make sure that we have this event tonight. I had this idea kind of right before our winter break. And she immediately got to work, to work with our partners because we felt it was important that we share information about bullying. Because that's what we're hearing a lot of on the news these days. And, and it seems as though a lot of the, the issue, the, the school violence stemming from bullying. However, as always, we want to be proactive. So, our goal tonight is to talk about preventing bullying. And things that we can do collectively as a community. It's not just a school issue, it's all of us working together as a village to make sure that we stop out bullying. And that's our message tonight. Let's work together as a village to be proactive about bullying. And also, I did, and I don't know how I did this, we have our tech director, Mr. Andrew Joshua, he will be recording us tonight. A lot that we do, we could not do without him. And the fact that he puts up with our cabinet, and he's the only male as part of our District Administration. So with that said, I'd like to welcome all of our partners, these are all of our partners up here that work with us on the programs that we have in place as part of our social emotional learning. Part of our mission is to not only make sure our students are achieving academically, but you can't get to the academics until you work with that emotional and mental health piece. We have to make sure they're not only physically safe, but they feel safe in expressing themselves and sharing their emotions here at school. And this evening, we have Ms. Kim Hayne, who will be our moderator. She is one of our partners with Family to Family. She provides LEOs, and that is our leadership students from junior high, a little part of the Lions Club, that's where this stems, this stems from. So they're learning to be leaders. We're great, gracious to have you, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the fans.
Thank you, Dr. Wright, and to our panel and to our audience members. As she stated, my name is Kimberly Hayne, and I will be your moderator for this very important discussion this evening. Before we get started, I do want to just kind of set the tone in the room so that we're all very similar definitions on bullying. So according to the website, StopBullying.Gov. Bullying is unwanted aggressive behavior amongst school-aged children that involves a real or perceived power attack. The behavior is repeated, or has the potential to be repeated over time. And both kids who are bullied and who bully others, they have serious, long-lasting problems. In order to be considered bullying, the behavior must be aggressive and include inbound for power, repetition. And StopBullying.Gov puts bullying into three main categories. Verbal bullying, social bullying, physical bullying, and we will also start on cyberbullying for that. So our goal is to educate and empower our parents, students, and the community to get involved and play a part in making the Lincoln community a place where children can thrive because they feel safe and supported. We are fortunate to be joined today by a panel of experts that partner with Lincoln for many of the programs and services that are available to our students and families. And before I go on, I will be remiss if I did not give a shout out to the Leo Club and rest of the show tonight. So hello, Leo, give your hands around us. So on our panel tonight, we have we have Ms. Kim Fulton, the founder and Executive Director of People Engaged in Community Enrichment, Peace in the South suburbs. Ms. Fulton holds a BA in Special Education from Northern Illinois University and a Master's in Education Administration from Purdue University. She served Thornton Township School District 205 for 35 years in various roles such as student teacher, special education teacher, English teacher, Dean of Students, and Assistant Principal. Next, Ms. Fulton, we have Alicia Houston, who has more than 20 years of experience as a licensed mental health professional, earning a BA in Psychology and MFA in Human Development Counseling from Bradley University of Peoria, Illinois. As a licensed clinical professional counselor, Alicia post-grad in Equality Legend, Audrey Lord wrote, "Caring for Myself is Not Self-Indulgent, It Is Self-Preservation." And that is an act of political warfare. Ms. Houston loves educating the mass about mental health and wellness. And in the middle, we have our very own, Ms. Natalie Baker. Ms. Baker is serving as the Principal of Lincoln Elementary School for the past two years. Prior to joining the Lincoln family, she was an administrator in the neighboring District 157 for six years, and taught elementary school for 13 years. Ms. Baker has recently completed the Education Specialist Degree from Paul State University. She has a passion for educating children and believes that student learning starts with building relationships with students. Thank you, Baker. Next, Ms. Baker, we have Mr. Shagman Lowery. He is the founder and lead developer of the MyPal School App, a web-based school safety app that helps keep school students safe from situations such as bullying, cyberbullying, personal crisis, fighting, and school threats by allowing students to report issues instantly and anonymously to improve school safety and in real time at any grade level. And we will hear from Mr. Lowery a little bit later, but let's welcome him to the panel. And on the end there, we have my fellow lion, Detective Sandra Baptist Rule. Detective Baptist has been a police officer for 33 years and is currently assigned to the Investigation Youth and Special Services Unit in the Harvey Police Department. Detective Baptist is a leader in her field and runs the deflection program and has various Illinois state certifications, including forensic interviewer, crisis intervention training, child abduction response team training, Cook County Internet Crimes Against Children, and DCFS Children Task Force Youth and Elder Services Officer. So let's welcome our panel. So I'm going to ask everyone to just kind of go down the line and try to tell the audience about your connection with Lincoln School and share with the audience why you think this is an important conversation.
Uh, I, I, Dr. Wright, it's been a while since I, over nine, 10 years I've known her. We started off, I was the principal of the high school. But we met, I was there, hopefully met, and we just liked each other, started working together. And so she inherited me, I inherited her, and we got it. So for justice, I would have had to define. When I was at Thornton High School, a development program called "It's Against Violence Everywhere." So we started with six children, and then we ended up, when I retired, over 200 students and five students. And the reason for that is because I wound up, she wanted to be leaders in the building. So each building, the program, brought my children because they had choice. So when we marched, we used to wear orange and purple, and when we marched, we were organizing, I think the superintendent wanted to call off her chair, there were so many kids in the room. And I never spoke. So when I retired, the year I retired, 2010, the principal, one of the principals wanted to meet up here and say, because she hadn't seen the change, whether it was through the children or the kids, told me that.
And so, Ms. Fulton, I just, I want to clarify, you run the Restore Justice Program here at Lincoln.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Well, I, I
And we're, we're very happy to have you with us this morning. So Ms. Houston, can you just kind of tell us a little bit about your connection to Lincoln?
Yes, so good evening, everyone, my name is Alicia Houston. And my connection to Lincoln is through Dr. Young. I worked for U.S. Chicago Medicine and English Department of Psychiatry. And when I started here, somehow we connected, and whatever school she was at, she always reached out to me, and she's like, I need your help, I need services, I need your help. But when she came here to Lincoln, it was no different. And the programs that were in here, we do girl talk here, and I do a lot of the professional development for the staff in the area of mental health, wellness, and trauma. So I am here for this specific conversation tonight because my daughter thinks that I'm being bullied.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Natalie Baker, I'm the Principal of Lincoln Elementary School. And so obviously, I'm very connected to what goes on, to this not only educationally, but also emotionally, socially, and at the end of the day, safety as well, which Lincoln has, I'm impressed when I came here with all of the things that have been put into place for students. Because I do believe that bullied students are more successful in classroom and happier and more well-anchored. So that is my connection, I'm just, I just love working with all of our partners here and our administration, and just working as a servant leader to pull it all together with Dr. Young, who brings all of these wonderful partners.
Well, good evening, everyone, my name is Shagman Lowery. And also, like, Mr. Few, and I met Dr. Young, and she brought me in as well. She kept telling me about how amazing the school district was, and I was like, damn, is that amazing? She brought me here, I was like, they're amazing, this school district is definitely ahead of a lot of other school districts in the community as well. But she brought me in, she allowed me to go in, present my, thank you program, MyPal Schools, that bullying and cyberbullying and purpose, rights, and fighting school threat. And once I met the team, it was like, man, we could really care. And I worked with a lot of different schools, I'm in a hundred different schools across five different states, but Lincoln Elementary is definitely, I'm serious, if the state were following God, right, led by Dr. Wright and Mrs. Baker, or Dr. Young, and the whole team, everybody would be in steps ahead as well.
My connection, I know you all saw us doing this, but you already know we all belong to the same little room. My connection is Dr. Young in his name. I work at a Harvey, but however, I'm still a Leo, and we all talk about everything. So Dr. Young, he said, hey, I got this program, this thing, this go, come on home. And of course, I'm a good, good Leo, I'm here. I'm here today to talk about bullying because I am on the ICAT team, which is the Illwood Children Advocacy Group. And we do cyberbullying, we do internet crimes against children, and I'm on that task force. So of course, I get to lead a lot of bullying, and then I get to deal with what's going on in the aftermath.
Thank you, thank you. So just to kind of jump into the conversation, you know, I think we can agree that bullying can take on many, depending on the age of the children, the situation, even sometimes the location. So Ms. Baker, can you come and give the audience an idea of what kinds of bullying behaviors, what kind of behaviors are considered bullying here?
Uh, it's based, uh, where you have one student that you may have students that enter periodically and will garner support from their friends to join in activities such as, including students from activities like games like that. You, we have seen students come to us with cyberbullying, the tactic of social media on weekends, and one of the things that we have put in place here, it's for bad things like that, to keep plates, we have the auto protection, so our older students don't have access to their phones during the day. So we also have the Guardian now, which filters our student communication via email, different apps that they may be on in the building, and it'll alert the administration if they see any, picks up any evidence of bullying, that's helping with cyberbullying. And then you may see bystander bullying, that's actually one of the people who are and they don't really know how to stop it, they don't want to become a target themselves, they don't want to be seen as a bitch. So that's why my school has an action, because it gives our students not sending to report things that they see or things that they're experiencing.
So you, you mentioned like bystander children that made witness bullying, exclusion, and I know our panel works with students from multiple schools. Are there any other trends in student behavior that you are seeing, and maybe in some of the other schools that you're working with?
In terms of behavior, the biggest issue, I guess, you have said, I've been in education for over 20 years, and social media technology is, that is where the bullying is being placed. I really love it to high school students, and I monitor their social media, and I believe as parents, we have to do things like that to make sure our child does not be victim of bullying and they're not telling us. And also, as parents, sometimes our children do things in the safe, they hide behind this screen. And that is something that I found in the most, you know, as a principal, where parents would see what their children were putting on social media, and they would be like, they would be horrified, but the parents would have to monitor those things because sometimes students will engage in that bystander, or not bystanders, but join in, it's not necessarily that they want to do it, but they'll join in, especially group messages, that's where a lot of it takes place, group chat, group texts, Snapchat. And we all know people at work, some people hiding behind a keyboard, and, and then also they may feel a little bit older if they see you here. So one of the things that, that I know the follow-up schools have been trying to do is, at the end of the year, but at Lincoln, we have a multiple to the programs that build kids up, so they have that confidence so that they don't engage in the, joining in the bullying, and they have that confidence, self-esteem, they'll stand up to the bullying, report what they see. Some of the programs are the core Leo program, where they would be leadership skills, how to conduct themselves, in a more appropriate and professional manner, getting them, you know, guarding skills, leadership. We have girl talks that we do where students have a space that you would speak about what they're experiencing or what is going on with them. We have our high school support room, where students that are feeling unsafe, whether it's emotionally or, you know, there's something going on, they want to speak to someone around the door, or speaking at, and she's in there and available, if you know how to access her. We have a chant for our boys, the male mentoring, follow the pedals for our girls. Also, it's a girl mentoring program that gives our, our young ladies the tools to be effective communicators, to resolve conflicts, which in turn, it builds them up so that they repel that bullying from them, they're not going to allow themselves to become a bully, or at least they have the tools to be able to, you know, navigate conflict. Ms. Fulton has been teaching our junior high students how to become peer juries, so that peers feel empowered and they feel that they can speak up, speak out, and correct classmates when they are wrong. And I, I believe Fulton, for our students, they need those opportunities to have, and they need us to give them some of that power, so that they can correct me. And then also, she has worked with our team to restore justice practices such as key circles within classrooms when there's conflict, so that we can nip things in the bud so they don't turn into like a long-term, over-time bullying situation. And then we've also had training for our teachers with Ms. Alicia Houston on mental health, because mental health, self-esteem, all played into the, in bullying, if I, it causes bullying and it can be a side effect, it's a good thing.
So thank you, Ms. Baker, you, you brought up a couple of things that I think would be good to touch on. Definitely, I think that Lincoln and I really support is, is a very stellar school district, and we say that, not just because you guys are so nice, but similar to him, I've had a chance to work with a lot of schools. And I know, you know, bullying can kind of be cultural, and it can take one form at this school versus what may happen at another school. So I'm wondering, because I know some of our panelists work at schools outside of Lincoln, so I'm, I'm wondering if you guys have seen any other trends in student behavior that are consistent in your life?
Because I'm on the other side, I'm on the bully side, however, I also have a school resource officer, and I also supervise other school resource officers. We get to see the bullying when you put up the shade boards, or it's on the internet, or you're texting each other. And we get the awareness for us, like now, beyond trying to do a piece of it, it's beyond trying to talk to you or put you to the side. Well, the trend is, it seems that once we get the little group together, everybody jumps in, and nobody's taking the blame. It's like, oh, but I didn't respond to her response, or I didn't respond because she responded. So that's our trend, and, and it's also with the middle school, bringing the high schools, and I, I always used to think that, you know, when you were in middle school, you were middle, they were middle school. When you're in high school, you're definitely high school. But after middle school, and I feel like you bring the high school into the drama, because that's where their sisters or brother come. And they'll call their sister and brother, say, well, this person is bothering me, or they'll send them the tag. And then the sisters and the brothers from the high school jump in. I've also seen it where they're talking to their little sisters and brothers, and they start picking on the other person's sisters and brothers in the school. And these kids don't even know what's going on, they're just following the trend.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a different perspective. So when schools bring me in, they want me to address it. But what, when I'm talking to the students, what the students are saying to me is that the teachers are bullying, or the students are saying, my parents are bullying. So I think we, you know, we, we need to be mindful of our behavior as well, because that's what students are saying, students are saying, but what if it's my teacher? And then they're giving me concrete examples, or what if it's my parents, and they're giving me concrete examples. So I just think we can learn something from them, but that, that's the, the, the added piece I would give you, that that's what's not, the students are saying to me.
Well, Felicia, so I think one of the things that I'm kind of trending is really kind of thinking about this in terms of, in a bullying scenario, you have a bully, you have a victim, and then you have the bystander. So Felicia, from a, from a mental health person back there, can you kind of give us a little bit of insight of, of really how this can impact a young person's social and emotional growth from those three perspectives? Because a lot of times, I think, we don't think about the kids who's being bullied, or the kids who witnessed this bullying and feel sorry.
And I really think that we don't, we don't pay attention to that completely.
Yes.
You know, so, but according to the research, all of the victims and the perpetrators have a higher incidence of psychiatric disorders than kids who are not normally bullying. So we want to pay attention to that and not ignore it, because it can become something, you know, more severe. The, the types of things that we usually see is depression, anxiety, and then, like you said, most self-esteem. So it affects, it can affect the perpetrator, the victim, and the bystander, if nothing is being done. So when we, we notice something, it's important that we say something, that we do something about it, like police officers were saying, we have to be able to do something about it so that the kids feel safe. Because that's when kids have been, experienced trauma, because that's what that is, if you've experienced a trauma, if you've experienced, children need to feel safe. And so when they're in your school, what are you doing to make them feel safe? When you're at home, what are you doing to make them feel safe? So we want to just pay attention to their behavior, you know, they may even have a lot of appetite, they may have troubles sleeping, their grades may suddenly decline, and it may be because they're being bullied. Or if your child is coming home wearing shoes that you did not buy in their Jordans, you know, maybe your child is bullied, and I know that's a hard conversation, a lot of times parents like, not, not, yes, it's for baby, yes, it is. So I think you got to be open and pay attention and, and notice if there's some things that are different in your case.
And they called me up because they wanted to know why no one told about what was going on. So when we went and presented, they said they didn't know what to do. They went to the washroom, washed their girlfriends off the building, but they didn't tell anyone in the building. So I would be, and every time, it would be done at Thornton High School or Thornton High School, I knew that, wow. So what I think our goal is, quickly, our leader, and in our leadership team, there has to be a special way, the reason for that is because it's been practiced. And they are not going to be there analyzing, they're going to hook the wire up and try to figure out what's inside. So either though, there's just, there doesn't mean they don't want their gifts to be paid. So what I preach to our team is, leaders don't let wrong walk in front of us. So then act the time and tell someone that harm is, when you learn what the harm is, you need to call the school. You need to let the school know something's going on.
And that's, that's a really good segue, and I, I think, Ms. Lowery, you were going to add some other, okay. And so, kind of continuing around that same pathway, I think, I want to kind of kick it back to Detective Batte, because I think we're talking a lot about things that are pretty common on the ground, and you touched on earlier some of the things you see from your perspective. And I think it's important to talk a little bit about what, when the what, when the school face for the things happening on the school ground that's manageable from a restorative justice or active school program or something uh, that the principal can, can sort of manage. At what point does that elevate to a criminal offense? And, and, and I'll ask the teachers to start, then I'm gonna bounce it back to you, Becca. We'll talk a little bit.
When does it elevate to a criminal offense? The very first time we put it on the menu? The very first time we put it on the menu. There is a law of the books that criminalizes bullying. The difference is, is where do we take this? Is it me being the police officer saying, everybody goes to jail or we're gonna charge a kid, but that's not restoring the child? That's a law of the law, Karen, bullying. It's not restoring the child. Oh, we stop, they don't practice. We're going to give the school opportunity to do their part, to control and control. When the teachers or the principal say this is unmanageable, I would take that and I would apply that on. There is a law that says that you cannot bully a person. They need them to a point where they will charge you with a cyber threat, terrorist threat. We've never heard those words. I know most of us are, we're still young. When we were younger, we never heard those words, a terrorist threat. Just making the statement, yeah, I'll beat you or someone goes to one or go out back. We would have said three fifteen. You know, if you threaten us, most of us in the room who's still young, if you threaten to beat up or say something on the internet, we wouldn't bring anybody. We'd come our way. And it would be an intense fight. We're over. On the internet, like she said, you can hide behind that screen. And you can be now threats. What you're gonna do, how you're gonna do, where you're gonna do, what place they're going to do it at. And that will come with terror threat because you're not talking to the whole school. You're talking to one individual. You're trying to terrorize that one individual, that you're a terrorist threat to the whole community. And do you think we, we have some bogus other officers pretty much that we try to charge your child? And then it goes to Homeland Security. So we will call Homeland Security to try and charge your child with a felony, if they never gave a why not for those. So when does it become criminal? When we don't think it's real.
And so I think, did you want to add something? Okay. So, and also I think that brings up another really good point in term of if, if, you know, if, if a child is being, if I'm, if my, if I'm a sixth grader and I'm being bullied, I'm gonna report that to Ms. Becca. What do I expect from that? I'm reporting bullying.
So first, uh, the administration team would interview the child and put in select statements to get uh, a better understanding. Is this a one-time incident or has this been, has this been happening over time? Uh, and then after we have, um, you know, interviewed the child, we've talked to the teachers involved. We will talk to the student that has been accused of bullying and, um, you know, get from them, you know, what their perspective is of it. And then, um, come together, put things into place, provide assistance in place to ensure that the child feels safe at school and doesn't have interaction. We bring parents in for parent meeting. We'll talk with the parents and let them know what we've put in place. And that information is shared with all stakeholders that interact with the child and that is being bullied and the child is being accused of bullying so that the adults are aware, consistent in supervision and uh, monitoring interaction.
So can the students report bullying to any adult in the building or do they need to try to get that note from Ms. Becca?
They can report it to anyone in the building and uh, a trend that we've noticed this, um, this year, which I'm really excited to have the app. Students have, the older students especially, they have gotten more comfortable emailing the administration. And they'll even email all three administrators, uh, so that we're aware of what's going on. A confidential way to give their message to us, but also a very quick immediate one. However, the, the info app will give us where it's that are specific and, and you know, it's more uh, timely to us than, you know, emailing maybe not in your office or whatever that goes to your phone. So, um, I think kids, there is a definite uptick in kids that are feeling comfortable as we've felt of continuing these types of conversations. That's why tonight is so important. Uh, but there's still a lot of work to be done in helping children feel more comfortable in reporting. Or feeling like if they told one teacher and nothing was done about it or it wasn't addressed, that they can, you know, go to other people.
Thank you.
And that's where relationships are important, like Ms. Bolton said. There's certain teachers that always know what's going on and they'll be able to give them info because of those relationships they have.
Now, I, I want to throw another kind of uh, what if, so what if, um, you know, what if I have a child who has an altercation with a student at school? But now we're over a panel and that's where my, my child gets kind of jumped on. Is that something that I can expect the school to take action on or do I need to reach out to the teachers back to you?
We always encourage, uh, parents, they, a lot of parents will tell us that, that a fight that occurred at the end of the week, we didn't know. But, uh, and we appreciate the communication that, that that's why relationships with parents is important as well. So they feel comfortable coming to us and letting us know we already refer them to the police. And I, I would like to share just a short story that kind of ties into what that, um, that she said. I had a student at my former school that was, um, jumped from behind and here's her friend at home stolen on her way home um, in the neighborhood walking around. And the parent didn't want to report the crime because she was afraid of the, what was the, of, about retaliation, so she didn't report. And unfortunately it led to a situation that escalated and resulted in the murder of uh, her older daughter and her friend that took up for the, my middle schooler. So it is real, it can escalate and I, I, we always encourage parents to report so that there is a trial. And you can, you can people that are in the community assist you in that manner.
Can I add to that? At the high school, that also saw a pattern to of the, the, totally. Basically throughout, maybe a friend. And that jeopardizes your college because instead of, uh, it's about your college or your application. Is that a character issue? So as long as you speak to the school and inform them what's going on, there's next. Then lawyers will have, I had a single lawyer. They will have a penalty that this happened here and this kid is here. But if the school doesn't know about it, they can't be nexted and not touch the other hand. It happens to you. So maybe party. What's going on that way, there's a way to talk to the parent. But what is this all they want to do? Maybe if they think traffic enough, they're gonna take your test.
But I, I think we're hearing a lot of, of, you know, encouragement through students as well as the parents. It's almost like the Homeland Security, you speak something, say something. But if you do hear that your child is being bullied, as I'm understanding, they can report that to any adult in the school. And it's definitely recommended, but according to stopbullying.gov, only twenty percent of school bullying incidents are actually reported. And I think we've heard that a lot of times, you know, the adults may not even be aware that a bullying situation is happening until it escalates. Um, and so, um, we mentioned that the district is partnering with MyPal to launch a web-based platform for students to report bullying in real time. So Ms. Laurie, can you tell us a little bit, I know you're gonna do a demonstration, but can you give us a little bit about the MyPal app and a little bit of the backstory? And I know you're gonna do a demonstration later.
Okay, so, um, in twenty nineteen, I was an educator at the Dawson Parks High School. I did a transfer from one school, they had rich assets, but I did a transfer from one school to another campus. One time I made a transfer to another campus, I would deal with a bunch of students by myself. My previous class was the technology class and fill that class with the stuff. Fill the class with the substance. You know, I remember like yesterday, it was over Labor Day weekend. So we went home to the village of Mass, which is far. And they had an altercation. I loved that altercation. One kid got beat up pretty bad. The other kid ran out. The kid ran home, came back into Labor Day, he was sitting in my former class, substitute sitting in the front. He's sitting in the back with his buddy and his buddy's like, yeah, look, I did all these things. You gotta, uh, beat up and they gonna miss you today. He said, yeah, but today I'm also with you. So he lifted up his jacket, pulled up the Glock forty, cocked a gun in the classroom when this guy like Ms. Becca's sitting here. And under going to him, it was a student sitting right in front of him. So the student right around him, broke a whole other station. So now she's mortified. First thing she does, grabs an iPhone, drives the text, but in that vicinity classroom, they get a signal. So, yes, so now she's mortified, loaded guns behind her. She's talking about, what is about shooting his oppo and this word and she tried to get the gloves, attention. But the glove up there, looking at it, trying to be a law. So he didn't know if it mattered to people or if they had attention and thirty-five minutes still passed. And I tell people, I'm just gonna attack. So she's mortified with a gun behind her, though. I'm gonna count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So that's the time to say, my mind is thirty-five minutes. So this young lady is mortified. So I put the glass, she tells me, so I'm just gonna do it. I'm trying to get the gun. He's talking about shooting his oppo. So there was administration, they found a young man, two and a half hours later, two and a half. They interrogated him for thirty minutes, finally another extra thirty minutes later. So that means thirty minutes, it was a loaded gun in your vehicle. A loaded gun. So after that, special school working, young men, this is bill. We have a teacher, and I mean, and I heard the teacher's talking about everything but the problem, in my Amazon package. And my cat, he is a cat movie while that. The one lady said somebody could just created an app. So that going over, she's in there, I said, okay, let me get to it. So I started going through the product of the situation going on in school, bullying, vibrant bullying. At the time I wasn't thinking about personal crisis, fighting, school threats, and I created the app. So I got it launched in twenty twenty at a violent school. I'm there to a damn school years now, man, and her school was across nine states. But ultimately, ultimately with this bullying, it's not a bullying that's going on in series, it's a start at home. See, the future, they had a thumb that needs to talk about the mental health and the situation. But it's a picture what you call an agent, okay? Agent doesn't care. That early childhood experience. See, everybody's career is the bullying or bullying, okay? And one day if I was asked, everybody knows where we speak bullying. Do you remember when you were bullied? They don't remember like yesterday. They never forget the bullying. But in return, when you did bullying, you didn't forget. You didn't forget the bullying, but they remember you ten, fifteen, twenty years later. And they never forget. So now how would it affect you? How would it affect your kids? Cause bullying's somebody, but now they still here in this school. So we're talking about the teachers bullying, a lot of teachers have been bullied. So now they come back with that same mind that like, I've been bullied and it's an advantage in certain situations and certain or that, uh, in, in a way. So we have to be very cautious about that. You know, when we talk about this bullying because we have to be, that's the whole thing. We have to give it a try.
And so I know we are, uh, coming down, we've got just a little bit while we're going, we want to make sure that we have time for Ms. Laurie to actually give a demonstration of it. And I just want to remind the audience, if you do have questions, we do have some cards on the table. I'll ask, uh, one of Leo Club members, if anybody wants to ask a question, write it down on the card. And we will make sure we get that, um, to become part of what we're doing here. So thank you, uh, a lot, Ms. Laurie. That, that was really insightful. And I know that, you know, we're hearing a lot of things that sometimes may not be a fault that we have as parents or as staff members and, you know, things can escalate to that. And I keep hearing a lot about concerns, not only for the kids who are being bullied, but really acknowledging that children who bully are also experiencing something and, you know, out of the norm is maybe a mental health, uh, situation if you can bottom, um, anxiety and depression. And so in addition to having an app to make it easier for students to report bullying, um, Ms. Becca also brought up a lot of positive programs that the district is doing to support students. You know, as they're developing the social and emotional field that they need to have these healthier relationships and to really be able to resolve these conflicts peacefully among their peers. And one of the programs is the restorative justice training for teachers, staff and parents. So Ms. Bolton, uh, Ms. Bolton, I know you, you mentioned restorative justice, but can you kind of tell the audience um, kind of a brief, um, uh, a brief description of what is restorative justice and how does that work in a school like Lincoln?
Well, basically what we do is for somebody to help. Every time. They got people in your face. And we will leave that leaders make everything to be bullied. And so restorative justice is about bending the harm. So if Felicia and I get up here and start fighting, I'll be. What we want to happen is that if there is a problem or they come to us, that's what we want. Ten, I love my children. And they did that. She began it. And so they call the person. They call them. And they said, we need to have a purpose because we need to. And that's where we want our children to be. They, we want them to be problem solved in the school. And so we're trying to start peer jury. And so as we try to start people, our children, they. They are making, but I have. They see that it's not rather than we. And that's specifically, that's where I want our children to be. I don't want them to have to worry about this. I want these higher things. And it comes that, of course, they become one of their children. And I want you to go with them and share that with me. You know, that's it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bolton. And so, I got you on this. So and then, um, I know you had, you mentioned that you have, um, a program that you lead within the district that focuses on girls. Um, can you kind of give us a little bit of insight of, of why you focus on young ladies?
Um, I chose to focus on the girls because, um, the main girls, um, is the thing that's real. Um, it's to direct it. So like a lot of times we're doing girl talk, we know who the main girls are. So we make it a point to break them up. Um, and to get them to work with other girls so they can eat what they have in common. Because a lot of times the girls that are doing the bullying, they're doing it because like we are to have, we have this and they're to have that. And we just have to work on it now. And in the end, a lot of times the girls realize that they have more in common than not. So, uh, and I was with a girl, I didn't really have a bunch of bullying stuff that's going on right now. I think it was too physical at work or something. I don't know. But it's, it's, if you have cyber you know, because the cyber bullying is, if things are big, it's, it's, those group chats is the biggest issue, you know, she blocking your, it is, it is ongoing, ongoing, ongoing. So I just tell the girls because I'm a girl and I, I don't like the being girl thing. And so if we can help empower girls, you know, how do you speak up for yourself? If you notice that someone is being bullied, what do you do? You know, it's not just, you know, you notice it, but go with them, be supportive of them, you know, or as a teacher. If you notice that someone is being bullied, maybe you don't let that student go in the bathroom with those people that you know are bullying. You know, if you wait until they come out, okay, the bathroom is clear now, you could go in there. But there are other things that we can do. And the only thing that I'm gonna add for parents. There was a case that I'm here in the suburbs recently where a young boy was murdered after a football game. That boy was murdered. What came out later, I don't know, he was bullying someone. At the game, the 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 person I was being bullied, they had told him that, then that man part there. And it did what I let him shoot. So we have to be cognizant about the process of things as well. Uh because we're the parent and we lead by example. So now that young boy doesn't have a father, that mother doesn't have a son, and it was all because of bullying. So maybe, and I don't know if it was addressed before, if they had a B circle or whatever, but it could be complicated. So that's why I wanted to keep in mind that we need to address this so we don't have situations like that and bounce over. And that boy was a freshman. He had just come out of eighth grade. This was his very first homecoming and he lied because of it. So keep that in mind.
And I think it's the, it's the dopamine effects when we don't talk about that, that that's the way you're not getting that confidence at home. So now you're like, okay, I'm going to school, I'm a bully, I'm a bully. And that pumps you up and they like, oh, hey, she had this bullying time over there and it pumps you up and it pumps you up. This is false faith confidence. So now you got it, now you rolling with it, but you don't realize how many people you're down. They really ain't your friends, they're just scared of you retaliating. But if that happens back, and we notice that that's the society, we look what's going on, little boy, we got to go in. The kids see it on TV, they see it on the parents. I always get my little big kids, they gotta get their support. And that's one thing where they really, because they need to keep supporting school, but it's it's deep within that. We gotta go in and support fast.
And so I think um we are hearing a lot of information, and I hope the audience is taking it in. And I'll ask, do we have any questions in the question box? And and while we go over that, you know, I think, you know, we want to try to make sure we have some really good takeaway for the audience. I'm gonna hit you guys with a couple of questions. Some of this stuff we may have already touched on, but I definitely want to make sure that we give the audience a chance to have to hear this. You know, um we talked about this, but what signs would I look for at home? If I, to see, you know, what are some things that I might see in my child at home that make me suspicious that he might be getting bullied?
Wonder why they Facebook, Snapchat, Instagram, um TikTok, and TikToks. I think the kids think that we, me, when I say me being a bully, we can't be yourself because you do. I want to tell you, stop moving it out. We can be it. I love when people tell me, oh, I deleted that. I was like, really? Okay. Trust me, your phone for five minutes? Yeah. I make a phone call, get somebody come over and dump it. And I have everything you do. Mom, Dad, I have everything next to you too. Um kids, when they're on Facebook, Snapchat, they do stuff, then they delete it so that you can't be. Start looking at their cash. Start checking it. It's, you know, most people don't know this, and I know everybody knows this, but did you, everybody created a Gmail account? So when you change your phones, what do you have to give? Check your phones. Your Gmail, right? I don't care what phone you use. So it's pumped straight into the cloud. Do I have your Gmail address? Okay, that's my name. I was trying to say, that's a thing that I noticed about my child is that she was really bubbling, really excited, really happy, really easygoing, and then she just started being mean. Oh, and just mean and yelling at everyone, and her brother slamming doors. And we don't do that in my house. So I was like, well, something, something must be wrong with her. Because she's being in this way, it's not going for her. But also her grades were declining, um she didn't have appetite, and she wasn't sleeping. So that's why I said pay attention to the behaviors, because there's some differences. Um and then the difference, like if your child is you sit at the school with a certain pair of shoes on or certain clothes, and then they come home, they don't have those shoes, they have different clothes. That may be a sign that you're being bullied or money. If they have, you're sending them to school with money, and then when they come home, they don't have money, what do you do with the money? Oh, I don't know. Or they're taking barstums of money to school. What do you mean, hundred thousand? So those are just the things that you just want to pay attention to. Child takes a thing. I trigger when they come in the house, I trigger when they go on out the door. But I want to know this one. So that those are just the things, just pay attention and know what your child is doing. Because you never know, it could be your child.
And I can drop on her concert. There's a new drug. Because I need to know what's going on so that I can watch out for it. Because what are they called, those kids? So you
Okay.
And it comes from a whole school. I was raised by my mother's nine plus. And so I was raised by parents who had old fashioned jobs. And none of them, and I did with seven. And none of them got a job. Or one of you was raised by my father, but you know, that did. But just know that they set the rules in the house, they would consistently put rules in the house, and they were expectant. But don't come in and hear it. You never hear it. And then one day, my youngest girl appears in my house. And I'm coming down with him, and my dad's calling up. Oh, my goodness. I hate you so much. My new my brother is going in. And then my uncle who was saying, so my father was and my father was
I'm on, baby. Don't put your hands on the kid.
But you know what? I'm really glad we did. I believe that. So what we do is a couple of questions from the audience. And it says, um, is harassment considered a sensible thing? And when does harassment become a criminal? If someone just harassed you, they didn't
You're putting in a ransom.
Does it fit, I mean, harassment means to give a threat of a threat of so if I'm calling you consistently and you don't want to be bothered, that's a form of harassment. And it calls fancy. And I will knock you out. It's the threat of it's the threat of something else is going to happen. Something you are planning. If I'm calling you saying, I'm gonna beat her up far and I'm quickly calling her, I'm disrupting her ability to live a quality of life she's used to. I'm interrupting her life. She's not interrupting that. I'm causing a problem. That is a criminal act. It's a woman like, just like talking. There's a long outfit, this lady was talking to her husband. I think everybody thought it was a booze. She kept making complaints, the complaints, the complaints about the harassment. Until the man went into her job, shot her, shot her, and then shot her with a cord. He was harassing. And no one in the beginning wrote a report to say he needed to stop.
So so let me ask you this, uh Detective Backs, and and I'm gonna let the town know, we are winding down. I'll make sure that Mr. Lori has a uh a chance to so in 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 thinking about middle school um students and may not always be, I'm not a huge fan of people, maybe that kid who you told them that he's maybe out of one of there, he's constantly, but he's sitting next to you when he's following me hard with your hand. Stop that. Leave me alone.
That is a form of stalking, too.
Okay.
That's what I'm around and stalking. It's the threat of doing something. If you're following me, I'm in fear of, what are you gonna do next? If you're constantly next to me, and I told you, look, I don't wanna be your friend. I don't wanna talk to you, we we're not cool with it enough. And you stuck constantly in my face. You are violating my rights and quality of life. I wanna eat without you being with me. I wanna look at TV without you being there. I wanna talk to my friends without you being over my shoulder screaming on me. First, I say, start with the teachers. Start, start with your act. Tell them you're in a crisis. Then tell the teacher, then tell everybody. Because the more people know, the more they can watch out for your harassment. And watch their behavior. Because if you've told them, stop following me, and I told them it's Fulton, I told them it's Alicia, I told them it's Planger, I told Shaq. And they still see that same person behind me, my wife, hey, are you okay? Do you need something? Ask the person, hey, are you good? Are you okay? Do you need something? Because there's probably one kid or this person that you constantly follow. And putting them in that that position of being unconscionate.
Thank you. I think that was really clear. Um and this, this was actually a question for you um for it it's for Detective Backs and or the principal. At what point, if any, um is it apparent responsibility? I know we talked a little bit about kind of drawing the line between things that happen on the school ground, things that may happen in the community. But if you want to kind of give a couple of second for that.
Um it's crucial for us to not only look at the student that's being bullied, but at the student that is doing the bullying. Uh I have found in my experience that uh especially with with boys that bully, that sometimes there's something wrong at home. And um by the, by talking to both parents and informing them of what's going on, and it's opened the door for connecting by that reported to us. And that goes back to the age that uh Mr. Glover was talking about as well. But it, we talk to both parents separately, but um sometimes we are depending on the prior relationship able to have a parent to come together and mediate. But we do keep it kind of head with the parents to make sure that anything new can be shared. And as Detective Backs has stated, if we know, then we can, we can watch. We can say, no, you go this way, you go that way. We can change classes. We can look um at at the students a little closer to making sure that things have have not escalated or changed.
And we're gonna, we're gonna get uh one more question from the two part, and I'll let have a go with this one, and then I'm gonna call Ms. Lori. So it kind of, the one question is, uh when the bullying start? We started that. And then the other question is, when bullying's born, does it make no when the bullying start? And the bullying go there, okay. Long, since the beginning of time, I recorded, somebody was bullying from us.
Yes, I think we do a much better job now, uh as we're more aware and proactive as a culture in um following up on bullying, identifying and and looking into the root cause and how it's affected. The, as you said, it's it's been around the longest earth, but
Right.
it's come to the forefront a lot more in the last twenty years.
And if you're doctor, if you say this, my niece is calling, my my nephew is uh doctor. But he kind of called with an issue on his head. And so she called, she said, I'm gonna want to doctor, but and that's his way to say, you can stay in your place. Because I can call you.
Um I would just add, as a parent, um when my daughter would tell me things that was going on, I would allow the school, you know, I would tell the school and allow them to take it. Now, as of today, I won't keep it, but I'm also on the school board. And so at one point, I think one time she said the little boy punched her in the stomach. And then the next time she said the little boy kicked her. And so at that point, I called the principal and I said, listen, I'm calling you, this is the second time. It's not gonna be a third time. Because the next time I'm coming up to the school, but I'm coming at the police and the parents, not at the board. Because this is my child. And I don't know what's in here, but I know the principal got on the bus, the principal talked to that student, and she has not had any more problems with that child. So I think you as a parent, you know where mine is at. And that was mine. We can get there. I was like, you know what? This is too much. This is getting out of hand. So I think you have to figure out and and go to the school and have a present. So I started going up there, and then I would ask her every day, is everything okay? I still ask her to this day. She said, Mom, everything's fine. I'm like, do I need to come up here? No, no, Mom, you don't need to come here. So you have to pay attention. And then I noticed her behavior starting to change back. And so now she's okay. But you have to figure out when is your breaking point. But that was my breaking point when he kicked her. And then when we, we had a little conversation, we don't like those circles, the little boys, did he just like? And I was like, well, can you have a question on how you stomach is not how you know people that you like them? But that's what he thought, that you had to do those things to get their attention. I said, well, now you have my attention, my husband's attention. So that's not the intention you want.
Thank you so much. So I know that um this has been a really good conversation. I'm so glad that we got so many really good questions from the audience. And I do want to say uh I appreciate our members joining us. We should get them around the front. Administration for for hosting this really important conversation. And I know because we can have so many programs and services, that there are always opportunities for parents to be part of the school community, get to know the staff, to get to know the providers who are with your children out of school. Um we do work together as advocates for the baby. And so what I'm gonna do right now is turn it over to Mr. Lori to give us more information and kind of demonstrate for us how the MyPal app, how the MyPal app works. And then we will kind of close out with everything. And uh I will ask, before you leave, to make sure that you can do the exit survey. There are paper surveys in that yellow bin, or you can scan the QR code, and you can do your exit survey on your uh device. So I would like to thank you all for joining us. Thank you for the questions and for your attention. And then Lori, which
So I need some random volunteers. Anybody with a cell phone? Everybody got a cell phone? It don't matter how many people, whether it's one or a hundred. You can get your cell phone out. I'm gonna have you vote to a website, okay? It's gonna be W W It's gonna be www dot M Y P A L S C H O O L S dot com. Tell me when you get there. MyPalSchools with an S dot com. Just let me know when you get there. Okay, somebody there. Okay, so now, if you scroll to the bottom, you're gonna see a little circle, kind of like sign that says, it's gonna be a yellow circle and a green circle and a blue circle and a pink circle. Scroll all the way to the bottom. Okay, when you get to the bottom, I want you to click a section, anybody, it's gonna be random, click a section, and I want you to go ahead and fill one of those sections out. Now imagine, I don't know who's who. Okay, so now we have somebody that didn't do their thing, a parent or guardian at MyPal School, they're in sixth grade. Situation happened with a few students, they were bullying, a cyberbully in the classroom. That is one, I don't know who that was. And we have another one here, Tasha, is a student at MyPal School, was in third grade. She had an incident on ten eighteen twenty four at six fifty five with some females that were planning on fighting in the playground, is that correct? Somebody named Tasha? Okay, let's go to the next one here. We have a situation where we have Amaya, who's a student at MyPal School, phone number ends in four zero zero eight. She's in fifth grade, she planned on fighting some students in the lunchroom. We have another situation here where Joe was a student at South School and he's being cyberbullying, back texts, video, video chat, it's been going on for a few days now. Have another situation here with Drew, is a parent and a gardener. They have, their situation's happened at MyPal School's phone number ending in seven three eight six and it's going on with another student in the gym. So I just want to give you an example of how fast the work happened. Were those some people in here? Just like that. So now, making elementary, yes, those reports, just like that, a student has a situation, they get instantly like that, whether, like I say, bullying, cyberbullying, personal offenses, fighting, school threats, they get it now. So no more of the days of walking in the principal's office and then, hey, hey, bro, what was you doing in that principal's office? Okay, I'm talking about this happening at school. And also, I'm gonna tell you a statistic that's real crazy. Most school incidents happen when it comes to fighting, situations of bullying. They start Friday, three PM, they resume Monday, nine in the morning. So a lot of these kids know that the situation, that would happen in the neighborhood because that's their justice. For their school, you get that protection. So if I have an incident, let's have it at school. So now we get suspended, he gets suspended and everything. So I want to always have an incident at school, but incidents in the community kick up into the school and what the MyPal School app does, you have an incident, it's twenty-four seven. So if you can get into it with somebody on Saturday, give the school a heads up. You got Dr. Rice right there, you got the whole team right there, the preschool department, and instantly they can have it right there. If a parent, a lot of times, parents hear a situation, I'm not immune to it, you hit a kid in the back right there, man, he gonna whip on so and so here. Parents don't report it right, they can go ahead and give a heads up because, you know, in school, when it's somebody else's kids, don't keep. So now you can go ahead and be proactive about it. Even the neighbors in the community, they, Mr. Jones sitting there all day watching Jeopardy all day. He watching a camera review it all day. And he's, the situation going on, he know he could go to link. Now, he can report it as well. He can go ahead and take a video of it and see, uh, Mr. Laurie in a black coat, Dr. Thorno in a black coat, he opinioned to it. He can report that and send it to the school. So now he reported that situation Saturday. The school, it's a Sunday, we know when Mr. Laurie is to school, Dr. Thorno is to school, that's what we're looking at. So we can make a difference and we're working in our community, and we have to go ahead and do that message out. So a lot of times when I come to school, I have an event, so like now, I've been bringing food tonight, but next time we have an event, try to get the whole community, let them know it's food, because it's gonna have to be something that brings them in, okay? Most parents ain't coming to an event just to get about, we know that, I better teach you. But if I say, hey, it's food, it's gonna be chicken, it's gonna be taco, it's gonna be, they'll come out. And then when they come out, when they come out, then I can go ahead and install in them, hey, let's make a difference, Dr. Laurie. So like I said, I want to thank Dr. Rice and the whole team for inviting us out, myself, the whole panel. You know, we're gonna try to make a difference. And I tell people, and I told the kids the other day, as long as we give these kids love, we can make a difference. That's the whole thing. They feel love that makes a difference. When you hear about these situations of, like, you know, where Mrs. Houston saying that kid was hitting and punching her daughter, first, I think it was domestic violence. Was there something going on in the house because he liked her, but he liked the Ike Turner style, you know? So we don't want that going on, but as long as we let these kids know they feel love, he can, that's the experience, you encourage them, hey, little Johnny, yeah, that's a nice jacket, that's a nice coat. Hey, those are nice shoes, you went there and encouraged them and build them up that way as well versus them, oh, look at his shoes, he got nothing, pale ass. No, we can build these, something, tell them, give them a little compliment, and that builds their self-esteem, they might not be doing that at home as well. So we just want to build these gears up and make a difference.
Well, I want to thank you all for coming out. Um, this was an outstanding, uh, town hall. It was an excellent presentation, we have experts here. And a, a lot of the reasons we wanted to do this is because we do take it serious here at school. If something is reported to us, we will act. We will do all that we can possibly do to keep your child safe while they're here at school. We try to put things in place to make sure if something is happening outside of school, they're not leaving at the same time. But we have to work with the parents to make sure that, so if, if a situation continuously occurs, do know we're doing what we can here at school. But we also need to make sure that we're partnering with each other. We're not pointing the finger or blaming each other. And, and if there's a situation where the communication just is not going the way that you feel it should with the, with the teacher or a lot of times you want to talk with other parents, we won't do a lot of parent mediation in our building because that's not what we're equipped for. Because most of the time it can be fraudulent. But we will try to provide a safe place for you to be, if that will help. But we will do all that we can to make sure all of our students are safe. I think most of us are parents and, you know, as the panel has said, I think all, I don't know, but I was bullied. And I remember that bully's name from fourth grade to probably fifth grade. And I remember it just as if it was yesterday. And I was that child, if I had that act, it wouldn't have lasted. But I was afraid and embarrassed to share that with anyone because it made me look weak. But now as we start to realize that we have an avenue, we have the technology, now we can report it and start to make sure that we feel safe. So that's what we're trying to do here. So once again, I want to thank the panel. And I want to thank you for coming out. And thank you everyone. As Dr. Rice said, um, I think this was an awesome event that needed to happen. We also have informational tables, we have Urban L League, who have programs, if you want to go over and check their table out. They have local programs for you to support your children. And we have information on our MyPal app and all around the school. We have these posters so that the children can know how to access MyPal. So when you go home tonight, reenterade, uh, our MyPal app and let the students know that they can see it around the school and make sure that they have the courage to talk to adults and let them know if things are going on in the school. And I thank you once again. And have a great evening and be careful because it's about to snow.